Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Canton Township Regular Board Meeting on June 24, 2025 at 7:00 PM.
Madam Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Treasurer Diane Slavens as temporary clerk. Support?
Motion made by Trustee Summer, supported by Trustee Kate. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So Treasurer Slavens, can you please take roll call?
Yes, thank you, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Ansari here. Good evening. Trustee Borninski.
Good evening.
Treasurer Slavens, good evening. Supervisor Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
And Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to adopt the agenda? We're going to pull item C2 off the consent calendar for a future meeting.
Okay, Madam Supervisor, I move that we adopt the agenda with an amendment removing C2.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, or supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, we are going to start with our presentations and recognitions and formal resolutions, so we are going to begin with our assessors' report.
Good evening, Madam Supervisor. My name is Aaron Powers. I am the Township Assessor for Canton Township. I'm with WCA Assessing.
Is that working? I can't hear.
Maybe I'll try to get it a little closer.
There you go. There you go. Thank you.
So again, my name is Aaron Powers. I'm the Township Assessor and one of the managing partners with WCA Assessing. With me this evening, I have Tracy Haley. She's the supervising assessor that we have here in the township, and we have a couple of items to go over with you this evening. Welcome any questions. It should be a very short presentation. So a couple of the items that we'd like to discuss and go over with you this evening is our Department of Treasury audit, and then we're going to discuss a little bit about the valuation trends and some of the things that we are seeing for Canton Township. Follow up with a little bit of information about the new updated Assessors Manual for 2026, and we'll be happy to take any questions that you may have at the end or during our presentation at any time. So the first item is our annual, or by, well, every five-year Assessment Role and Practices Audit. So the state of Michigan, going back even to 2007, has had a process and procedure to audit all municipalities in the state, their assessing practices, and to determine how assessing is being conducted to ensure that everything's being done appropriately, efficiently, and within the legal boundaries that are set forth with the General Property Tax Act. So back in 2018, the Michigan Legislature passed Public Act 660, which upon a number of different items established countywide audits for every jurisdiction in the county every five years. So in 2025, every jurisdiction in Wayne County underwent an audit, and our next scheduled audit time will be in 2030. So as you're aware, as a part of that audit, there's a number of things the state looks at in great detail. Our audit results in a letter from the Director of the State Tax Commission, as here on our screen, but a couple of the items that the state looks at is whether or not the local unit has properly developed, properly developed and documented land value determinations, and we had met that requirement. Additionally, whether or not the local unit has properly developed and documented economic condition factors. Again, we met that requirement. And then the last item, which is on the substantial compliance review, is whether or not the local unit has less than 1% of the parcels in override and less than 1% in flat land values, and again, we met that requirement. There are a number of technical compliance review items that the state looks at, and the results letter is a culmination of all of our results. However, when the state conducts their audits, they send out questionnaires to the finance director and the supervisor's office, and it has a bunch of information that they compile in addition to us submitting information to them to determine our compliance. On the technical compliance reviews, they asked whether or not we use a State Tax Commission approved computer-aided mass appraisal system, which we met that requirement, whether or not we have a policy detailing office accessibility, we met that requirement, whether or not we provide online access, we met that requirement, whether or not we provide contact information on our notices to our taxpayers, again, we met that requirement, whether or not the support staff and board of review are sufficiently trained, we met that requirement. As a side note, as a part of Public Act 660 of 2018, it is required that our local board of review takes biannual training sessions as required by the State Tax Commission. So that's something new that our board has to deal with, and every board in the state of Michigan for that matter. They also had a requirement that the local unit comply with statutory requirements with respect to the property tax administration fee, which we met, and whether or not we conduct annual personal property canvases, which we met, whether or not the July or December board of review meetings comply with statutory authority, and of course, we met that, whether or not we have an adequate process for determining exemptions, that was met, whether or not the state, whether or not the local unit meets the state requirements in supervising the preparation of the assessment role, we met that requirement, and then whether or not the local unit implemented KAMA, which is computer-aided mass appraisal data standards currently is adopted by the SDC, which we had met. You'll see a little circle on the one technical requirement that we did not meet, which is whether or not the local unit has property, properly adopted poverty exemption guidelines, including asset level test, and was publicly followed, or policy was followed. So we were determined not to meet that requirement because of a language issue that the auditor found. When an applicant applies for a poverty exemption for their property taxes, they're required by statute to meet two different things, and that is that their income threshold is not any greater than the federal poverty guidelines, or a amount as established to be not lower than the federal poverty guidelines annually by the State Tax Commission, and then the second is an asset test. And that asset test essentially means that, let's say, an applicant would have liquid assets in excess of one and a half times their annual tax liability. So as a component of the asset test, we had language in our policy that stated that an applicant couldn't have a second property, meaning that if an applicant was seeking a poverty guide, or a poverty exemption, that they couldn't have a recreational property up north, or a lake house someplace else, which makes perfect sense to us, and that's how we adopted our policy going on for numerous jurisdictions across the state. One thing we failed to consider is the language did not state that an applicant may have had a piece of property that was in such a minimalized value that would be less than one and a half times their liquid assets available for their taxes. So it was theoretically possible that someone may have had a lot that was worth $5,000 or $2,000. So as auditors do, they liked us to have something to find, so they would like, they wanted us to change that language in our asset test as it relates to that. So back in May of 2000, I'm sorry, I should state, May 13, 2025, we recently brought those poverty guidelines before the board of trustees to have that corrected, and it was adopted by the board of trustees. So now all requirements are met for substantial compliance. The one technical issue has already been corrected. There's no additional action that's necessary from us. So again, we'll go through this process in 2030. The state changes everything every five years, so there will be, in addition to the items that have been met, they'll find new things to utilize in their audit, and we'll have this process again in five more years to come. One of the other things that we wanted to kind of discuss this evening was basically some of the valuation trends that we have here in Canton. For example, Canton Township makes up about 9% of the overall value of Wayne County and about 10% of the override countywide taxable value. And what you see here on the slide is the fact that Canton is the second-largest essential tax base in Wayne County. It wasn't always this way. Up until 2025, Canton was typically third on that list behind Livonia. But as you can see there, obviously Detroit's got some substantial value with the 400,000 parcels that they have, but then there's Canton, Livonia, and Dearborn. Now, we also wanted to trend, or to try to show some of the information as how Canton has grown in their overall valuation since the economic downturn that started, at least in the assessing world, to start to be realized. From our High Point SEV back in 2007, we started seeing significant reductions in eight, nine, and 10 for a number of years up to where we are now. So back in 2007, Canton Township was the fourth-largest in the county as far as value, behind Detroit, Livonia, and Dearborn, and now after 2007, we've had about 159.48% increase in our overall value, far exceeding the county average of about 130.62% increase. Now, that's obviously due to a number of items, such as development, growth, new tax base coming onboard, as well as property values just increasing on the base level. In the way in which assessors conduct their annual assessments every single year, we use a state-mandated Tax Commission cost manual. And one of the things that's going to be a little bit different for 2026 is that the Tax Commission has revised the new updated cost manual. That revision is to the base costs reflecting changes to the latest market conditions and labor trends that we are experiencing. So the State Tax Commission employs a company to go out on an annual basis and update costs by a countywide basis to be able to look at those trends, but in this particular fashion for 2026, we're actually looking at an entirely new manual that would encompass things that may not have been prevalent in the marketplace back in 18, when the state adopted the previous manual, and things that are going to be changing from trends, such as construction trends that may be in existence. For example, it's much more commonplace now to see whole-house generators as a component of a property as comparatively to back in 2018, when they weren't nearly as prevalent. So we're anticipating some pricing changes and things that will occur with that. That basically means that we're going to do a complete new sales analysis to accommodate these new costs. So we kind of start over from scratch when this happens. It was about a decade ago or so that this last occurred, and it's going to be a new restart year for us as well. So just something I felt was a little bit worthwhile to mention, it's, we've done this every time that they've come out with a new manual, so it's nothing particularly new. It just happens about once every 10 years or so. Just wanted to kind of go over those brief little items that we've been working on in this past year, and welcome any questions that you may have.
Okay, I'll start with the board. Any questions, comments? For the previous, Diane, go ahead.
Sorry, just to, thank you very much. I know I work closely with the assessors, and I appreciate all your hard work, because you are great when the, your team's great when the residents come with questions. I truly appreciate that. A few things I just wanted to bring to the residents' attention, and I'm sure you'll agree, is you go yearly out to assess homes. That's something you do yearly, and then in around mid-February, everybody gets an assessment letter from the assessor to see what their home is reassessed at, which gives them an idea of what their property taxes possibly will be. And if they ever have questions, they can always come to you, but it's always important, after they get the letter, to come to your office.
That's very correct. Yes, in Michigan, tax day is December 31st. So by law, assessors are required to evaluate properties on an annual basis as of December 31st, and as we do that, we conclude our assessment determinations, and then we mail out an assessment change notice on an annual basis, and as you indicated, that usually comes out in late February. And that assessment change notice is always known, it says, "This is not a tax bill." And I understand that it's sometimes confusing to look at and to read, but it's by state law that we have to include all the information on that assessment change notice that we include. It's the same assessment change notice that essentially every jurisdiction in the state of Michigan has to use. And then if an individual has a question, or something does not look appropriate on that assessment change notice, then that would be the time to contact us. On that assessment change notice, it also has an estimate of how that might ultimately affect the tax liability of a property, so that's something to look at on an annual basis. But certainly, we welcome and highly recommend that everyone look at that on that annual basis, and should they have questions, to reach out and contact us at that point, so we can help explain the process.
Kate?
Just thank you for your report. We appreciate all the work that you do in the township.
Could you let everybody know how many residents and how many businesses you assess when you do this every year? Just give numbers for everybody.
So residences are kind of, residents or residences?
Resident, residents.
So as far as parcel count is concerned, let me make sure I have that information. We always look at properties by the six classes of property that the State Tax Commission kind of chunks everything into, and that's residential, commercial, industrial, developmental, and agricultural. And we do have a few of those still, earliest agricultural exemptions here in Canton Township. But I believe the parcel count is in excess of about 36, 37,000, including personal property parcels as well, which is a considerable amount of parcels for township-sized jurisdiction.
How about businesses, parcels, business parcels?
Businesses include personal property, and that's a little bit different nowadays, simply because of the legislative changes that have occurred with personal property taxation since 2012. In 2012, the vast majority of eligible manufacturing personal property in the state of Michigan became exempt, and then subsequently to 2012, the small taxpayer business exemption is on the rolls as well. So the vast majority of those individuals, and I know the number changed recently. Yeah, so between, up to, if a small business has less than $180,000 in true cash value that is in that one particular location, they're exempt now. So one of the things that we do as a part of our personal property canvas is annually review that exemption. But of those businesses, probably in excess of 3,000 personal property accounts, but that also includes all the exemptions that we annually have to review and determine their exemption status, and make sure that they're still in compliance with the small taxpayer personal property exemption. There are, of course, certain types and sizes of business that are in excess of that $180,000 true cash value that are still on the rolls, that don't have an exemption established by the legislature, and we have to look at those annually in the same processes we always have.
You had said on your last slide something about that, beginning for assessment 2026, you'll have to use the 2025 cost manual, and it's going to include things like whole-house generators? Do you mean portable generators or installed generators?
No, for it to be considered to be real property, it has to be permanently affixed to the real estate, and it can't be removed without damage to itself or the real estate. So there are certain items that are just differences in construction techniques that come about as homes change every decade or so. It used to be that the manual was always very considerate about the type of floor covering and interior, for example. We no longer look at linoleum, because linoleum hasn't been installed in forever, but it's just kind of updates to the new procedures and the new materials that are being used throughout the state.
Okay, so yeah, probably before you go out, we probably should, if there is anything else that, just to let the residents know about that, so we don't have a lot of questions after, that would help. You can put that up there.
For sure. And we're still waiting to get that manual ultimately from the state as well. It's going to be upcoming as an update to our software in July, so as soon as we get that information, we'll be scouring through it to see if there's going to be any new items or any items of concern. We can definitely pass that information along if we feel that anything's going to be a big credible change as soon as we can get that info.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Amara?
Yeah, so thank you so much for your presentation, Aaron. I was wondering, too, what are the common questions that residents have for you? What are the things that they most commonly call you about during assessment season? I had residents come up to me with a bunch of questions as well, so if you could share that for our residents, so that they know what to expect.
Absolutely. The largest question that we always get is from new home buyers, and that is simply because of the fact that in the state of Michigan, we have this process called uncapping. What do I mean by that? Is that we have two values in the state of Michigan that are very important. The first is the assessed value of the property, and that equates to 50% or 50% of market value. The second is called taxable value, and ultimately, an individual pays their property taxes based on that taxable value. So since 1994, when the state of Michigan adopted Proposal A, we've had assessed values that can increase by any amount or decrease by any amount to reach market value, but that taxable value is limited upon the amount that it can increase by 5% or the rate of inflation, whichever's less. And we've had times in the last two or three years where inflation's exceeded 5%, but it's been capped at 5%. This leads to a disparity between the higher assessed value oftentimes and the lower taxable value, which benefits every homeowner in the state of Michigan thoroughly. Until they go ahead and they sell that property, that process remains the same. When a property transfers ownership, that property then becomes uncapped, and that taxable value resets to the assessed value for the new owner. And oftentimes, especially potentially with first-time home buyers or other individuals, they're not always made aware of what that new tax liability might be to them because of the uncapping situation. And that's an imperatively important fact, that if someone's interested in acquiring a property, then they certainly want to have a clear understanding of what their new tax liability might be. And they can certainly reach out to us. We'll be more than happy to give them all the information that we have throughout the year. There's a ton of moving parts. Milled rates can change. There could be different exemptions in play. But we can certainly help them to have the understanding of what their tax liability might be. It's a lot better than having a big unfortunate surprise that they find out about after the fact. And I would certainly, I teach all over the state, and by far, that is the biggest question and the biggest issue that assessors deal with everywhere, but it's that uncapping issue.
Well, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Brandon Grisco. He's our legal representation for the radioactive waste lawsuit that we have, and Brandon's going to give us an update on the lawsuit. This is basically the Manhattan Project, the atomic bomb, groundwater, and contaminated soil that is coming our way that we've stopped, and so we put up a, an injunction ourselves, Van Buren Township, Belleville, and Romulus to stop it. So the judge, we went to a hearing in May, so Brandon's kind of going to give us an update. Thanks, Brandon.
Good evening, everybody. I did one of these in Romulus yesterday, and I had to follow the deputy clerk who received an award for being the deputy clerk of the year, who received a standing ovation, and then I had to come up after him. So I feel a lot better about this coming up after the assessor presents versus somebody that...
Tax man.
Yeah, right, exactly. So just, just very briefly, before I kind of get into it in earnest, I just want to say my thank yous to Supervisor Graham Hudek, and really the whole, the whole board here, for, you know, the support of our firm and participation in the lawsuit, which is obviously a very important issue. Couple of, a couple of attorneys I want to call out, Dave Greco, the general counsel for Van Buren Township, Steve Hitchcock, the general counsel for Romulus, and then of course, Joe Hover here, all have been instrumental in making this lawsuit happen and getting it to where it is today. So as Supervisor identified, I'm Brandon Grisco with the Law Firm Fosso and Grisco. So in August of 2024, news broke that there was going to be, depending on who you ask, maybe between 4,500 and 6,000, maybe a little more or less, cubic yards of radioactive waste coming in from a Manhattan Project site in New York, from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, over here to Van Buren Township, to the Wayne disposal landfill. Obviously, residents were very upset about this. Local elected officials in the county and over many communities were very upset about this, and so, you know, what do we do about that? I do want to be clear, though, that this is still ongoing litigation. This is an open meeting, so I am going out on a limb a little bit in that regards, except I'm not going to, I'm not going to provide any information that, you know, that we wouldn't want out there in the public sphere, so most of the stuff I'm going to be talking about is factual, things that came out at the hearing that may be of interest, and then a little bit of a roadmap, sort of how we started and where we're at, and kind of what we expect going forward. So in September of 2024, then, so after the news breaks about this, in September 2024, Eagle Republic Services, and then some local elected officials, and even state and maybe federal elected officials, held a town hall. At that town hall, representatives from Eagle and Republic Services were there, and, you know, I think many of you probably participated in that, or have since watched it on the internet or something like this. And I think it was, it was conveyed from their standpoint, you know, the safety of the process and the licensing process, and different things like that, or at least as they alleged. We obviously have our own perspective on that. So Liz Brown, who's the Director of the Materials Management Division at Eagle, had identified that there would be some type of town hall, maybe in the midwinter, followed by draft license, and that is about 60-day process. And then you have an official public hearing. Okay, we're now in summer, and this has not happened. I think they do finally have an informational town hall scheduled for this week, if I'm remembering correctly. But notwithstanding, so that public, that public hearing aspect of this, the very important public participation in the licensing process has not happened. So mid-September, very shortly after this, our firm worked quickly with the support of the various communities, that's Canton Township, Van Buren Township, Romulus, and Belleville, to file a lawsuit in the Wayne County Circuit Court, where Judge Cox was assigned. And we, we, we wanted to really evaluate the situation, what the rights of the public were, you know, what sorts of situations first responders were dealing with, and things of this nature. And so we came up with a complaint, of which one count was under the Fire Protection Code. And so, you know, essentially, having spoken with Chief McNally in Van Buren Township, he felt that there was a real lack of awareness, training, equipment, access points, safe access to fire hydrants, and different things like this. Other communities in the area are under sort of mutual aid obligations to other communities, and so if one community calls for help, then communities have to respond to that. And so, you know, your Canton Township firefighters could potentially end up in a situation, you know, where they're responding with Van Buren or something like that, to the landfill for some type of incident. And so this was a situation that to the local officials and to the fire chief in Van Buren in particular was untenable. And so that's what the, that's what that count was about. And then the second count related more so to the public nuisance aspect of bringing in this waste on an expired license in such a manner that it would be likely that all this waste would be landfilled without the public really having any meaningful opportunity to comment. All the witnesses we talked to on the stand, the various affidavits and evidence and things like this, all suggest that the public, and the statute itself suggests that the public has a right to participate in the licensing process, has a right to be heard on this, and this was disenfranchising the public from exercising that right. And even the officials acknowledged that Eagle could potentially change certain parameters within the license based on public comment and things like that. So this was very important, that the public be allowed to engage in this process prior to this waste coming in, especially given the fact that their license has now been expired for two-plus years. But because we knew that this waste could come in very quickly, we also knew that we had to get an injunction to stop this and maintain the status quo in the interim while we waited for the litigation to play out, while we waited to see what was going to happen with Eagle and things like that. So those, that's a heavy lift. It was a heavy legal lift. You know, you essentially have to prove your case to the judge on the front end of the case, right? So you have to present sufficient allegations and evidence to the judge at the time of filing, such that he believes that you're likely to succeed on the merits of the case. And that, that actually happened here, and so we're very proud to have secured a temporary restraining order, just days after the case was filed in September 2024. And this sort of set off a number of fire drills with emergency motions and briefing, preparing for hearings that in some cases took, took weeks or even a month with adjournments and things like that. And so in October, we're prepared for a full-on evidentiary hearing, and on the eve of that, Wayne Disposal's attorneys removed the case to federal court to try and get this in front of a federal judge and take it out of our local Wayne County court system. And so the, again, the communities greatly supported us and pretty quickly authorized us to take the action that was necessary to get this back in front of... to get this back in front of a Wayne County judge, which we did. And we were successful in that. And this whole time, mind you, the preliminary injunction, the temporary restraining order stayed in effect because it hadn't yet been removed by the judge or there hadn't been a hearing on that. And so it wasn't necessary, or it wasn't legally speaking anyway. It just stayed in effect that entire time. And so rather than simply proceeding the hearing, once we got back into state court, Wayne Disposal tried filing a motion to dismiss the case alleging essentially that Eagle is the agency that really has primary jurisdiction here. And so court, you know, you should take a step back and let Eagle handle this because they're the ones with the expertise. We didn't agree with that, and neither did the judge. And so in February, we went for a hearing there, and the judge ruled right from the bench, denying that motion and then setting us up for the May 19th and May 20th hearing dates. And so we did proceed to an evidentiary hearing with two full days of evidence. I also want to recognize briefly Wayne County for their participation. They intervened in the case as, sort of like co-plaintiffs, but as intervening plaintiffs, and they've been a great help as well, bringing their own claims and their own witnesses to bear on this. So two key witnesses were Dr. El Sayed, the former Wayne County Public Health official, and Dr. Kimberly Kierfert, who is a University of Michigan nuclear scientist who served as the plaintiff's expert witness in this matter. And those two witnesses together really did a great job of framing out sort of the risks associated with this type of waste, technologically enhanced, naturally occurring radioactive material, or T-NORM. And they did a really good job of laying out the risks that you could expect from that. You know, we've seen things like a cancer cluster in New York, you know, sort of by the area where this waste is at currently. And so those sorts of things, obviously, very concerning from a public health standpoint. And so it was really helpful to have those expert witnesses really be able to break that down for the judge. And then we also had, from the communities, Chief McNally and then Mayor Voight from Belleville testify. And they really did a good job. So I just can't say enough about the witnesses that we had in this case. Wayne Disposal subpoenaed Liz Brown, who's the Eagle director that I spoke about previously. And so she did testify. Of note, on cross-examination, my colleague Joe Brown did a very effective cross-examination. But we found out essentially that the soonest they could even do a public hearing in this case would be August. That's what she testified to. So again, on cross-examination, you know, what could happen in the meanwhile between now and August? And of course, truthfully, this waste, again, could potentially come in. And so but for this litigation, every indication is that this waste would be coming in and might even be done by now. We don't know for sure, but that's the expectation, I think. They also had a contractor testify who is responsible for remediating the New York site. This is somebody who responded to a request for proposals from the Army Corps of Engineers and is going to remediate the site and then be responsible for transporting the waste from New York to the Wayne Disposal landfill over there in Van Buren. And surprisingly, shockingly, you know, as you guys may be aware, there's five landfills in the country that can accept this type of waste from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers FOOSRAP sites. And only one of them is located in a county of 1.7 million people. And that is Wayne Disposal, and the rest of them are located in counties with substantially less population. And unfortunately, it sounds like pricing schedules were important in the decision-making and population density was not considered as part of that. So these are things that are of note and concern that I want to report out here today. There are also two other employees from Republic Services who described the various testing, safety-type procedures that they follow, you know, what their employees do and things of this nature. But importantly, on cross-examination of those witnesses, for the first time, at least publicly that I'm aware of, the one witness actually acknowledged that, well, even though we have this sort of 50 picokiri per gram threshold, which is the concentration of radioactive material that we're allowed to take, there's this other entity, you know, within the same sort of fence-line footprint called Michigan Disposal. And Michigan Disposal actually is a processing facility, so to speak, that's authorized to take much higher levels of radioactive waste and then essentially dilute it until it meets their permit requirements. And then they can sort of just drive it across the street within the fence there and dispose of it at the landfill. This was, I think, shocking for many people. I think the judge certainly expressed some surprise by this, even from the bench. So, you know, again, another area of concern, especially because dilution is not an area in virtually any other waste stream where you're allowed to dilute waste or pollution or anything like that in order to meet a permit requirement. So an area where the statute, the regulations, and the licensing just appears deficient, frankly. So that's how the hearing went. The next steps from there, the court ordered us to submit proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law, which we did on Friday. So all parties, so the communities, Wayne County, and then Wayne Disposal all submitted their proposal for findings of fact and conclusions of law. We're still kind of digesting that. We had quite a bit of material to get through to be able to do that, and they did as well. And then on July 1st, we'll be back in front of Judge Cox for closing arguments in this case. Well, I shouldn't say that, not in the case, but as it relates to the preliminary injunction hearing. So this was just to decide whether or not an injunction will remain in place from, you know, now until the conclusion of the case. So for example, if the judge were to deny the preliminary injunction, the case would technically still be ongoing. There just would no longer be an injunction in place stopping that waste stream from coming in. And conversely, if he were to grant it, then, of course, it would stay in place throughout the litigation process. So what do we expect is going to happen? Well, in litigation, things can go either way, pretty much any time. I think we've got other attorneys in the room that have probably lost cases that they should have won and won cases that they should have lost. So we feel like we put on a strong case. The communities put on a strong case. We met the elements. We presented evidence as to all of the elements of both nuisance under the Fire Prevention Code and as a public nuisance. And Wayne County had their own case and their own complaint as well. And so we feel that we put on a strong case and a good solid case with lots of evidence for the judge to consider. And we're going to have strong closing arguments on July 1st as well. But we don't know what's going to happen. So the judge that day could rule from the bench. It's possible. When we did the motions in February, he was ready with his ruling right then and there and ruled immediately from the bench, denying the motion that Wayne Disposal brought to try and dismiss the case. But also, he could take it under advisement. And so if that were the case, it wouldn't be until some point in the future that we would find out what the ruling is. And if he did take it under advisement, presumably, the injunction would stay in place during that time until whenever the final order issued on that. And I guess finally, if the communities do prevail and if Wayne County prevails and the preliminary injunction does issue and stay in effect, you know, we can expect that this is just going to continue and that Wayne Disposal is probably going to appeal that decision. And it would sort of just continue on status quo until the next update. So in closing, I did want to provide that roadmap, sort of where we've been, how we got here, and what we expect. As the community, we thank you, Board of Trustees, Supervisor Graham Hudek, for the trust that you have in our firm. And it's been a privilege to represent the communities in this case. And we know it's really important, and so we look forward to just seeing it through. And thank you for the opportunity to do this update. I will take questions on sort of a limited basis because of the ongoing sort of litigation thing. So to the extent there are questions, I can answer. But I hope you don't fault me if I say, mm, I'd rather take a pass on that one, but...
Thank you. So before the board asks questions, I just want to give kind of a quick summary of other things that are happening at the same time that the court case is happening. So just to summarize what Brandon had said. So Wayne Disposal in Wayne County is preparing to take 6,000 cubic yards of soil and concrete and 4,000 gallons of groundwater contaminated with elevated radiation from Niagara Falls Storage Site in Lewiston, New York, which from 1944 till 52 served as a primary storage location for waste and byproducts associated with uranium ore refining. And the Army Corps of Engineers is working on a multi-year project to remove that. And Lewiston, New York, again, has many cancer clusters around it. The state of New York has not said that it is not attributable to the waste. So at the same time, Representative, State Representative Reggie Miller and State Senator Darren Camilleri are working on legislation to raise tipping fees. And why that's important is because of this. Right now, Michigan is one of the lowest states for tipping fees. We charge 36 cents a ton, which means we're basically like an open trash bin. Other states are charging things like $13 a ton. So that tells you why we see Canadian trash coming here, why we see trash coming from the Upper Peninsula and other states into Michigan, filling our landfills. Canton landfill alone has maybe five years left on it. We're on the last quartile. And when that's closed, that means we're going to have to find another place to take our trash, which is going to cost us more money. So as we allow other states and countries to fill our landfills, all the communities in Michigan are in the same boat. We're all going to be looking for other places to do this. And as Brandon said, we're one of five states that takes this radioactive waste. And unfortunately, we're taking it in a very populated area, Wayne County, which is just three miles south of Canton Township. And Michigan is 21% of the fresh water in the country. And so our groundwater leads out to the lakes and streams, you know, and the fresh water. And so that's why this is very important. And it's important to push our legislatures and the governor to raise tipping fees. Because if we don't raise tipping fees, they're just going to continue to keep coming here. But at least if we're on par with the others, we have a chance to not have so much happening here. But we are filling up quickly. And five years is not a long time. So I spoke in committee with some of the other communities about two weeks ago to ask them to pass this. Michigan Municipal League and Michigan Township of Associations is kind of helping to revise the legislation to do this. But we really need to do this. Over the weekend, I attended the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and I proposed a resolution for Michigan delegates urge the federal government not to transport radioactive and hazardous waste across state lines. And this was passed by 300 mayors across the country. So even the mayors are saying, you know, so it's not even just filling up your landfills. This is being trucked across the country. So it could turn over on your roads. It could turn over... I mean, we had, on the way to Romulus, we had a train turnover in Ohio. So this is endangering, this is a public health issue. It's more than just, you know, we don't want it here. This is a public health issue for all states in the country. And we have to figure out ways to mitigate it in our own states. So that's kind of a summary of what's happening in the legislature at the same time. So, you know, pushing that is really important. But any comments or questions from the board? Kate? I'm sorry, Summer?
I'll just make a quick comment. I just wanted to say thank you so much for your work. As soon as, you know, we found out this was happening, Supervisor Graham Hudek has shown great leadership in pulling other communities together and pulling the township board together to make sure that we address this issue for not only our residents, but our neighbors as well in the state of Michigan. So thank you for your work, and thank you again, Supervisor Graham Hudek, for your leadership.
Thanks, Summer. Thank you.
Yeah, so along with Supervisor, I attended that town hall last September. And frankly, I found the information that was shared there to be quite shocking. Just, you know, learning that we were picked, I mean, because it was the cheapest, basically, to ship here because we're the closest to New York. And no thought about population, no thought about the Huron River being very close to the Wayne Disposal site. Do you remember, either of you remember how many feet from the site the Huron River is?
I don't, I can't say that I recall offhand.
It's quite close, though.
Close to a school also.
Yes, also close to, I think, a couple of schools, right? And residential neighborhoods. And so that was very concerning. And there was so much information shared, I don't even remember all of it off the top of my head. I remember hearing that their plan was to bury the waste 10 feet deep, which to me, I thought, 10 feet is not really that much, you know? So I just, I want residents to be aware of what's going on and why we're doing this. Because it's important. It's important for all of us. It's important for our neighbors. It's important for future generations. This stuff doesn't go away. It sticks around a long time.
Hundreds of thousands of years, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm going to echo what my colleagues have said. I too was at that town hall. And thank you very much, and thank you Supervisor Graham Hudek for really pushing this. You know, that site is close to a subdivision with wells. Those folks, they have well water. You know, we have to concern ourselves not only with our neighbors, close to the river, and also transporting it. Something can happen as they're transporting it to who knows what community. So, you know, I hope everybody does reach out to their legislators and encourages them to pass whatever legislation to increase the tipping fees and that we fight to get this stopped. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, another thing is, so we can read this resolution at the end, but any questions for Brandon? All right, no? All right, thank you very much, Brandon.
Thank you, everybody, for entertaining me for the last little while here. Thanks very much.
Thank you. No, we're going to have public comment in a minute, but this is just a board time, so we'll have public comment. Okay. Thank you. So our next resolution, we're going to be voting on. So instead, we're going to move public comment up ahead. And just to let everyone know, so public comment is, the first public comment is agenda items only. Then there's regular public comment at the end. But this will be on agenda items only, including what we spoke of. So it's three-minute public comment. Just to let everyone know, it's not a back-and-forth. I know some people say they've done this in other communities. But in our community, it's just public comment. We'll listen to what you're saying and for three minutes. And we will consider that when we vote on the items. So Emma Kramer, our resident advocate, is going to help us with the three minutes. This is a little machine that helps along. And if not, we'll also be timing on light if it's not working out so well. But I'm going to look online first. Let me know when you're ready, Emma. So we have attendees online. If you want to do public comment on agenda items only, you can raise your hand electronically. I don't see any right now. Okay, so anyone in the room want to comment on public items, agenda items only? Please come up to the podium. Anyone? Any public comment on agenda items? Okay, go on up. Whoever is, both of you, one of you.
Good evening, and thank you for taking my public comment.
Please state your name also and where you live.
Yes, my name is Beth Vaughn. I live on Hanford Road by Ridge. And I'm commenting on general calendar item number six. And this is regarding the special land use. Forgive me, but my comment is only if this special land use is for the property on Ridge Road. So with that being said, I moved to Canton 20 years ago. I looked for a community that was both economically, socially, and culturally diverse. Canton fit the bill. It still does. I'm proud to be a resident. However, Ridge Road, since they paved it, has become a hazard in the summer. It has become a hazard in the winter. 55 miles an hour. There's one-stop sign at Hanford. You have a blind spot this way. You have a blind spot that way. If this land use on number six is for Ridge Road, there should not be any sort of school, store, frankly, housing, in my opinion, but specifically a place where there's going to be lots of people entering and exiting. Not only is Ridge Road not suited for it, Hanford Road's not suited for it. The proximity is very close on that property to Fells Creek, which, as we all know, if we live in Canton, is prone to flooding, especially this past three years. So I would really implore careful consideration for this property if it is on Ridge Road. When they paved Ridge Road, they made the hill, they made the blind spot. It's too late. There's no going back. We have to be more careful about what we do in Canton, specifically northwest Canton, where that's the only slice left we have of woods and nature in all of Canton practically. So my job and the job of some of my neighbors is to help keep it that way. And that's what we'd like to do. My next comment is for the resolution opposing the Salem Township Water Treatment Plant. Yay. If we could not have it dump 84,000 gallons of water into... If we could not have it dump 84,000 gallons of water into Fellows Creek, that would be phenomenal. I would implore the township and whoever is here to help, to help us make this a reality and make the best possible outcome for everybody, because Fellows Creek. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Please state your name and where you live. Thank you.
I live in Plymouth, so I'm a neighbor, not a Canton resident. I've lived in Plymouth 19 years. I happen to live in the neighborhood that borders the Salem Springs development, or proposed development. I am a civil engineer, I have a master's degree in civil engineering, a professional engineering license, and I'm a certified floodplain manager. My specialty has been floodplains for 20 years, including computer modeling of these rivers for FEMA studies. One of which, I modeled a creek in Canton Township many, many years ago. I came here tonight to raise awareness that the Salem Springs development is going to negatively impact Canton residents, no matter if there is a wastewater treatment plant or if there is a new sewer line allowed through Plymouth Township and Canton Township. This land is currently farmland and woods. There is a manageable amount of runoff in its current state due to the natural ability of the land to absorb and allow stormwater to infiltrate the surface in its current condition. Once much of this land is developed into high-density, we're talking 0.2 acre lots, and some commercial development, even with some stormwater detention, there will still be an increased amount of stormwater coming to you here in Canton, along Fellows Creek. I've, I've listened to Canton residents describe their flooding around Fellows Creek and the damages that impacted them at the Eagle meeting, the public meeting that was held on the proposal, the wastewater treatment plant proposal at the North Ridge Church. It's real. This increase in stormwater runoff from the change of farmland to high-density development, commercial air development during high precipitation events will cause flooding to be even worse for Canton residents. Not just about the discharge from a wastewater treatment plant or running a new sewer line through Plymouth and Canton, as either of these activities, if allowed, will make flooding worse for Canton residents, especially during extreme events. Homes in Salem Township typically use septic systems. Why is this development not using septic? This would minimize the impacts of stormwater to Canton residents and reduce the high-density that they're proposing. So I urge Canton to consider both aspects of this and how it will impact your residents.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come to the podium. You can line up at the podium also if you'd like to. And please state your name and where you're from.
I live in Pilgrim's Hills, the one that keeps getting flooded out. I'm going to actually speak up for my neighbor, Tom Drummond, who called me, he couldn't come, and he wanted to speak his piece. I don't know how he knew this, I think from prior meetings, but he said that testing on the creek, because they want to dump this 800,000 gallons a day into Fellows Creek, that winds literally through Pilgrim Hills subdivision by neighbors' houses. Some neighbors, it winds in twice. They said that, he said that the testing was done on low volume. That doesn't help us because the conditions weren't good enough for testing. We don't have culverts that are big enough to handle the water. The culverts that we do have in the bridges are falling apart. And this person in, just himself, has had, we are not in what they call the 100-year floodplain, and I don't know too much about that, but they say, oh, it doesn't flood but every 100 years. Well, guess what? We've had several floods in the last 18 months. And he, in fact, had four and a half feet of water in his basement the last time. That was in April last year. So again, the culverts are just not big enough to handle it, and I think that might be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? George? Mr. Miller?
Ready?
Yeah, we're ready. I think, I think I'm as ready.
Okay. Let's start with the chemical dump over there, we'll all run accepting that waste. Give you an example, whatever it was, 4,000 yards or gallons, tanker truck on gas is 10,000. How many gallons trucks are going to come in? 100, 200 of them? Gravel trains home 20 to 40 yards. How many hundreds of yards of gravel trains are going to come in? 100, 200? Right off the top of your head. I'd like to know if there's been a topographical survey of that area, because there's supposed to be a quick go underneath that, and it goes over to the Huron River, over to Belleville Lake, and out to Lake Erie. That's one problem. Every time these guys, Eagle is the problem, and the Corps of Engineers, they seem to be the problem. Far as the legislature is going, 10 cents on the ton, them trying to bring it up to five, or 10, or 20, New York is going to go 20, 25, or that, they're going to be a race on the tonnage. That's what it's going to be. All right, it is flooding. I was down at the sewer plant years ago and worked down in Detroit. Maybe you don't want to hear, you know, big rain come here, they had a slaughterhouse down there, it then washed blood from the pigs and stuff and animals. Those guys were fishing in the Detroit River in a pool of blood one night. I called DEQ, and that sewer plant will not flood, they will not let it flood, they open up the gates and let the river have it. That's how it works. I guarantee you, if it rains, and they can't purify those tubs down there, that water will be opened up to that creek, and wherever it goes, it goes. That's a fact, I've seen it. Now let's get back to the nuclear waste. Topographical survey, these guys, they come in and they get things redone from the sanitary landfill to chemical landfill, and it's chemical landfill where they say it's hazardous. Well, what do you consider hazardous? Arsenic, or what? That particular dump right there where they're working, Mr. Castillo was here years ago at this township. They went in the gate, you're the truck driver, okay? You swear this is it. They said arsenic is in cell 13, for example, drill down there and bring it up, 10 years later, they couldn't find it. They don't know if it's themselves, 27, or if ever made it to the dump. Why should you believe those people?
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else? Public comment? Please go to the podium.
Supervisor and trustees, my name is Craig Rackwoods. I live on Thornwood Street in the Pilgrim Hills neighborhood in Canton. I have the privilege of enjoying about 70-foot of frontage on Fellows Creek in my backyard. It's a place where my two daughters have explored the wonders of nature, catching frogs, and enjoying everything that our waterfront property has to offer. Unfortunately, what was once a joy is also a stressor to me now, as I have seen Fellows Creek swell its banks on numerous occasions, often coming within feet of my property during rain events, which were once 100-year events, which are now occurring multiple times every rainy season. As mentioned, the creek swells its banks frequently. It's causing a constant state, I'd say, of disrepair to the roads in the Pilgrim Hills neighborhood. Significant erosion has occurred, significant washouts have occurred. The neighbors have resorted to putting their own cones to indicate these areas of washout in the neighborhood, which are often large enough to swallow an entire wheel of your vehicle if you're not paying attention, or if it's dark while you're driving through. The culverts, as mentioned previously, are insufficient and often overwhelmed, filled with debris, causing backups of water throughout the neighborhood. Additionally, we have a neighborhood to the north called Hampton Ridge. There is a retention pond directly behind my property for that neighborhood that is in a state of failure as well. It is not, it's a detention, a series of detention ponds that are no longer effectively doing their job of detaining stormwater. Instead, it just kind of passes through right into the creek. So it's my concern with the failure of this pond and with the additional wastewater. I'm not necessarily concerned about the quality of the water that is coming out of the facility. I know it's probably cleaner than some of the runoff from neighboring neighborhoods that's in there today. I am concerned about the volume, though. The volume of water coming through and just the additional flow. So thank you for taking my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Okay, I don't have anyone online. So the next item is, we will be, just to let everybody know, while Brandon was speaking about the radioactive waste, it did say we were speaking on the screen about the resolution opposing the Salem Water, wastewater treatment plant, so that was incorrect. So we'll fix that in the video, but I just want to let everybody know that Brandon was talking about the radioactive waste. So the next item we will go to, to take a vote, is the resolution opposing the Salem Township Wastewater Treatment Facility and granting consent to Salem Township to construct and maintain a sewer line within the public right-of-way through the Charter Township of Canton. And we do have some, some guests here, if they would like to speak to it. I don't know, we have Supervisor Gary, I don't know if you want to say anything, or our Eagle representative, you know, can please come on up? Supervisor Gary Whitaker of Salem Township.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Just wanted to, I, some of our representatives, especially Eagle with the state, Phil Ogroff, if you can stand, he's over there to answer any questions that the board might have, or... And then we do have our engineers in the back, Brian Simons, and the folks from Stamtech. So, again, we appreciate you considering this tonight. We have appreciated your supervisor so much for standing up, and if any of you were at our public comment back in April '24, I believe it was, many people showed up for that, and your supervisor was the one that stood up and said that somebody needs to work with Salem Township, and therefore she really has, and the other community. So, just to, so you know where we're at as of right now, Plymouth Township did pass their resolution, six to one, to allow us to come through the public right-of-way. So that's where we're at here tonight. So I won't, unless anyone has any more questions, I'd be glad to answer, but...
Thank you. Any questions for Gary? No, no, the board only. The board have any questions for Salem Township?
Sorry, I didn't hear the last parts. You voted six to one to what?
Plymouth Township did to vote six to one to go through the public right-of-way, coming through Plymouth, and then it would come into Canton.
Okay.
So basically, it would have to come through Plymouth Township, Canton Township, Van Buren Township to Ypsilanti.
Yep.
Correct.
I don't know if Eagle wanted to say anything. If you want to come to the podium, please.
Well, thanks for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm Phil Ogroff, I'm the Assistant Director in Water Resources Division at Eagle. I want to talk about our strong preference, our strong position for the Salem Sewer Alternative instead of construction of the wastewater treatment plant. That's currently under consideration today. If this alternative is not supported, I just want everyone to know that we are prepared to issue the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit, the discharge permit for the wastewater treatment plant. We had a public hearing last year, back in '24. We've analyzed the comments, and we are prepared to issue that permit. But our preference certainly is, on environmental reasons, on infrastructure reasons, on compliance reasons, and on water quality reasons, is to use the sewer alternative to take that flow with capacity at Ypsilanti Community Utility Authority. So I do say that the connection of the existing wastewater treatment plant, or the existing flow from the urban sanitary district is preferred to go to the Yucca wastewater treatment plant. It's also a requirement of anti-degradation. If there is an alternative, and this is the state's Clean Water Act, it's equivalent to the federal Clean Water Act, we're required to make sure that if there's an alternative for sewer, in this case there is, in Ypsilanti, that we use that if it's possible to do so. So from the standpoint of minimizing impacts to waters of the state, regional wastewater solutions are preferred to construction of individual wastewater treatment plants. So I want to have it known that our position is that we would prefer the sewer alternative to Ypsilanti Community Utility Authority.
Just want to clarify, so what you basically said is that you, you would rather have the pipeline versus a wastewater plant, but if it doesn't happen, you are ready to issue a permit, you're saying?
That's correct, and I think we're to that point now. We've gone through the, all the rules and all the requirements that we have for issuance of the discharge permit. It was proposed last year, it was drafted last year, we're ready to issue it. Our preference, though, is that, and we continue to support the alternative instead, we believe it's the, it's the proper alternative to use for the sewer alternative to the Ypsilanti Community Utility Authority.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, before we read the resolution, our draft resolution and talk about it, does anyone have any questions for the supervisor or Eagle? Okay. All right, so we have a draft resolution that we're going to read, and then we'll discuss as a board as to what, where it goes from there, and then take a vote, okay? All right, thank you. So basically, also, as you had said, you know, this is not to stop development, because we aren't trying to stop development, and a judge has already ruled that development can't be stopped. And so I just want everybody to know that. It seems like some people are mistakenly thinking that you can stop development in another township, and you can't. And we aren't trying to do that at all. So I just wanted to clear that up also. Any other comments? So we're going to read the resolution, and the board will discuss, and then we can move forward. Okay. Kate Supervisor, trustee, Borinski is going to read the resolution.
Thank you. Resolution of Board of Trustees, Charter Township of Canton, Michigan. Resolution opposing the Salem Township Wastewater Treatment Facility and granting consent to Salem Township pursuant to MCL 247.1831 to construct and maintain a sewer line within the public right-of-way through the Charter Township of Canton to connect to the treatment plant of the Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority, Yucca, in Ypsilanti, Michigan, subject to the below-listed conditions. Whereas Salem Township has applied to the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, Eagle, for the permits authorizing treated water discharge from a wastewater treatment plant in Salem Township to service Salem Township's urban service district to be located on the west side of Napier Road and the south side of M14 with affluent meeting state water quality standards to discharge into Fellows, to discharge into Fellows Creek. Whereas Eagle has issued a Part 301 permit authorizing Salem Township to discharge an estimated several hundred thousand gallons of treated wastewater per day into a tributary to Fellows Creek, and Eagle has advised Salem Township that it intends to issue a Part 31 MPDES discharge permit to allow treated water discharge from the Salem wastewater treatment plant unless a viable alternative is identified to allow Salem Township to construct and maintain a sewer line within the public right-of-way from Salem Township... construct and maintain a sewer line within the public right-of-way from Salem Township to the Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority in Ypsilanti through Plymouth Township, Canton Township, and Van Buren Township. Whereas since July 1, 2017, Salem Township has leased and reserved wastewater treatment capacity at Yucca to ensure that capacity at Yucca would be available to serve Salem's urban service district when needed by Salem Township, and such reserved capacity continues to be available. Whereas Eagle has always supported the construction of a sewer line to connect Salem Township to the Yucca wastewater plant in Ypsilanti as part of a regional sewer system instead of the construction of a local wastewater treatment facility in Salem Township. Eagle has further expressed that a regional wastewater system, such as a connection from Salem Township to Yucca, minimizes the impact on the waters and streams of the state. Whereas Salem Township prefers the construction of a sewer line to connect Salem Township to the Yucca wastewater plant in Ypsilanti as part of a regional sewer system instead of the construction of a local wastewater treatment facility in Salem Township. Whereas Canton Township has experienced severe flooding in recent years along Fowler Creek and Fellows Creek, and in areas along the desired route of the sewer line, which additional water capacity from a wastewater treatment plant would aggravate the flooding conditions in residential and commercial areas. Whereas Canton Township has many residents on septic systems along the sewer line route, and connecting to a sewer line would be advantageous to residents, reducing the risk of water contamination and waterborne diseases, improving water quality, protecting our creeks, rivers, and lakes, and may be required by Wayne County. And whereas MCL 247.1831 authorizes a township to consent to a municipality's installation of sewer pipelines underground within another municipality if the governing body of the township along which these sewer lines are to be constructed and maintained approves. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton to grant consent to Salem Township pursuant to MCL 247.1831 to provide these viable pathways to construct and maintain a sewer line within the public right-of-way through the Charter Township of Canton to connect to the treatment plant of the Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority, Yucca, in Ypsilanti, Michigan, provided however that such consent is conditioned upon Salem Township providing Canton Township with the following infrastructure improvements, services, and agreements for the protection of residents, businesses, and the environment, the cost of which shall be the responsibility of Salem Township. One, a direct sewer connection into the Forest Main for all Canton Township homes and businesses on septic systems along the desired route, or alternatively extending and installing the Canton Township-owned sanitary sewer main along the route of the Forest Main. Based on this desired route, this includes: A, extended sewer from Warren Road north to Joy Road; B, extended sewer from Hanford Road south to 650, I mean 6050 Ridge Road; C, extended sewers from Tahoe Way north to 2105 Ridge Road and south to 1365 Ridge Road; D, extended sewer from Mapleton south to Mott Road; the implementation of stormwater and flood management solutions along the ridge and Denton Road corridors near the Forest Main, and in the Geddes Bar, Denton, and Mott Road areas; the replacement of all trees, shrubs, landscaping, and natural beauty impacted or removed by the construction and maintenance of the Forest Main; the provision of an operations and maintenance plan for the addition of the Forest Main through Canton Township to be reviewed and agreed to in writing by Canton Township. The operations and maintenance plan shall be the subject of an intergovernmental agreement between the parties; execution of a release and waiver by Salem Township agreeing to indemnify, defend, and hold Canton Township harmless for all claims and liability in law or equity due to the negligence or intentional acts of Salem Township or third parties during construction of and for the life of the Forest Main.
Motion made by Trustee Borninski, supported by Trustee Foster. Also, Deputy Supervisor and Legal Counsel can help with any questions. Are there any questions, or Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything?
Not at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, the next steps would be to sit down with the parties and create an intergovernmental agreement on the details. That, basically, that's what it is saying, correct?
That would be one of the next steps, yes.
What would be, so, anything else, or...
The items that are listed under "resolved" in the, in the resolution.
Okay. Does the board have any questions or comments? Summer?
I don't really have any questions. I'll just make a brief comment. I think this is a very complicated issue that you and your team have been working on for quite a while to come to a resolution, and as I think you said before in your comment that we just couldn't say no, and we could not stop development. I do appreciate the work in trying to come through us, to a solution to be, to not harm Canton Township, to put our residents in the best situation, and I think, you know, not allowing the wastewater treatment plant is a great start. I think, you know, the sewer line, I think, is the right way to go here, and so I'm happy to support the resolution, but again, thank you to everyone who worked on getting us to this solution for, it seems like, a very long time.
Anyone else? Diane?
I'll make a quick comment. Ditto on what Summer said. Good job. I know this is a very complicated issue, and I do appreciate some of the things we do want to work on, adding the, extending the septic to some of the folks on these roads, and also implementing stormwater and flood management solutions on Ridge and Denton. I think this is a great, it's a great resolution.
We have approximately 100 people on septic, so this would assist them.
Very helpful.
Who else? Kate Ormura?
So, I asked this of Joe the other day, but just want to make sure, in case anybody else was wondering, but this does not obligate people who are on septic and want to remain on septic to do that.
No, it does not. In order to either tap directly into the Forest Main or Canton's sort of owned sanitary sewer system, they would have to pay a tap fee like anyone else that's on septic and wants to tap into a sewer line. Although I believe Wayne County does have a regulation which indicates if you are on a septic system, the septic system fails, and you have access to a sewer line, you are required to tap into that sewer line.
So, then, I look forward to, I mean, if we do pass this, that we sit down and create this intergovernmental agreement and hammer out the details together, and I think this is a viable solution for all, all parties. We'll just get to the details after the vote. All right, ready? Everyone, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes, and we look forward to sitting down and creating some of the details with our communities, our fellow communities. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes.
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from June 10, 2025.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slaven, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Payment of bills.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slaven, supported by Trustee Ansari. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Consent calendar.
Okay. Madam Supervisor, I move that we pass the consent calendar. C1, consider approving a letter of agreement with Canton Command Officers Association regarding position title change. C3, consider second reading of amendment to Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinance for outdoor dining. C4, consider second reading and adaption of an amendment to Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinance for tree and woodland preservation. C5, consider approving the annual payment of Western Wayne County Fire Department Mutual Aid Association dues.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slaven, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next, we have the general calendar. Approve the purchase of new security camera system for the Public Safety Headquarters with an associated amendment to the 2025 police budget.
Madam Supervisor, I waive the purchasing policy and purchase of Avigalony Security System for GSI in the amount of 500, 500, 503,381 with a 5% project contingency in the amount of $528,550, and approve the associated amendment to the 2025 police budget to complete this project.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slaven, supported by Trustee Ansari.
Borninski.
Oh, Borninski, Borninski, okay. The Police Department on recommendation from ITI and Facility Services requesting to purchase a new Avigalony Security Camera System to replace its end-of-life ZAC Vision System, which is currently unsupported and contains cameras banned by the FCC due to parts from China in them. The Township's contracted security vendor, GSI Gemolero Systems Integration, has quoted a full replacement system in the amount of $503,381. This includes an Avigalony server, 66 cameras, licensing, mounting units, and installation. The cameras will be located through the exterior and interior of the building with concentration on the sensitive prisoner intake and holding facility areas. Facility Services is further recommending a 5% project contingency in the amount of $25,169, bringing the grand total of the project to $528,550. For operational continuity, it is imperative that the system be replaced as a whole and not in phases, which would require the department to concurrently run two separate security systems for building, monitoring, and fire processing. The Police Department has $100,000 budgeted in capital outlay and is requesting an amendment to utilize $428,550 from the police fund balance to complete this project. Chief Chad, do you have anything to add?
You know, the first thing I'd like to offer to the board, we never expected the prices to go in this direction, but it is true, we do need one platform, and as you see in the world today, safety and security is quite important, so that's what you see with that price point. We have to be mindful, the critical facilities, especially the prisoner care, civilian care in our custody, so this, this will solve that problem, and as we expand out in the township, I believe this will be the genesis for our security system throughout the township. I'd like to thank MSD and Gage for your work on this. They're really the experts, and the IT Director is very mindful of being compliant with some of the requirements of the federal government, and that's really what escalated the price.
Any questions from the board? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next, we have consider approving a comprehensive upgrade to public safety Motorola radio system with an associated amendment to the 2025 E911 budget.
Madam Supervisor, I waive the purchasing policy, a comprehensive public safety radio system upgrade to include new radio and software from Motorola Solutions in the amount of $1,018,077.32, and MPSCS activation fees from the state of Michigan in the amount of $35,500, with an associated amendment to the 2025 E911 budget to utilize the restricted use funds, increasing the revenues in our packet, and increasing appropriations from professional contract services and capital outlay computer and equipment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk, I'm sorry, Treasurer Slaven, who supported that? I'm sorry.
It was my turn.
Supported by Trustee Ansari. The Police Department is requesting a purchase, to purchase a comprehensive upgrade to its current Motorola radio system. The last major upgrade to the radio system was in 2012, when the department switched over to the Michigan Public Safety Communication System, 800 megahertz radio system. This proposed multifaceted upgrade will include new portable radios, new mobile radios, new software for several retained mobile radios, and two new dispatch consoles totaling The project also requires a one-time MPSCS activation fee per radio totaling $35,500 due to the state of Michigan. A detailed breakdown of the equipment being requested is listed below. The proposed Motorola radio purchases will replace out-of-service life radios and an additional safety encryption features, provide dispatch console backup plan, and bring the department into CGIS compliance with the impending requirement changes due in 2026. Motorola Solutions is a sole source provider, and the proposed radios will work seamlessly with the department's six Motorola dispatch consoles recently upgraded during the department's dispatch renovation project. This request also includes an amendment to the 2025 E911 budget as this project aligns with MCL 484-14083 of Michigan Public Act 32 of 1986, which permits 911 surcharge funds to be used for equipment, software, services, and training used for the receipt, recording, processing, and dispatch of emergency calls by a public safety answering point. Chief Bowden, do you want to add anything?
At this time, besides the fact that it's mandated compliance for CGIS, these things we wanted to, we have for some time kicked the can down the road, to be honest with you, because this is quite expensive, but we've seen some officer safety issues in most recent times, and a few of our most incredible investigations where we weren't able to communicate with some of our partners, including the FBI and some of those folks. So, it put officers at risk, so we need upgrade, but the main thing that we have to come in compliance with is our CGIS requirements, and we, we have an issue with that unless we upgrade the system. Our goal would have been to slowly transition over a period of years, but we do have a healthy 911 balance, which will allow us to utilize some of those funds.
Any other questions from the board? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item, consider waiving the bidding process and approve the purchase of Motorola VHF radio equipment with an associated amendment to the E911 budget.
Hey. Madam Supervisor, I waive the bidding process and approve the purchase of radio equipment for Motorola Solutions in the amount of $52,240.89, and approve the associated amendment to the 2025 E911 budget, increasing the revenues in our packet and increasing appropriations from the capital outlay computers and equipment.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slaven, supported by Trustee Ansari.
Borninski.
You guys, you are throwing me. Unless I see you, I'm like, huh! Sorry. Summer got it. My Trustee Borninski. The Fire Department currently utilizes the Michigan Public Safety Communication Systems. 800 megahertz radio system is its primary means of emergency communications. This system provides a highly reliable and interoperable platform for dispatch and field operations. However, as with any system, the MPSCS is not immune to potential outages and disruptions. In such cases, the inability to maintain communications between the dispatch center and fire personnel would critically impact emergency response effectiveness. To address this vulnerability, the Fire Department is proposing the implementation of a VHF radio system that would operate independently of the 800 megahertz network. This VHF radio system would provide a secondary dispatch circuit, ensuring continued communication between the dispatch center, fire stations, and fire apparatus during a failure of the primary system. Establishing contingency communications on a separate platform is essential for operational resilience and ensures that a failure in one network does not compromise the other. The Fire Department is requesting approval to purchase the necessary equipment to establish a VHF radio system for Motorola Solutions for $52,240.89. The system will service... The system will service a secondary dispatch circuit to ensure the endurance of emergency communications in the event of a failure or outage of the current eight-hundred megahertz radio system to maintain consistency with existing radio infrastructure and service agreements. The department is requesting to waive the bidding process and purchase the necessary equipment for Motorola Solutions, the current provider. The department is also requesting an amendment to the 2025 E nine-one-one budget for this purchase. Chief Stockline, do you want to add anything?
I would just say that this came about as we started looking at our ISO ratings, and we're in the process of going back to do these ISO ratings, which is our public protection classification. So it really regulates the insurance throughout the township, per se, and so we're working to lower that standard. This was one of the items that they identified as needing attention, so I believe when we fix this, it'll add points to the system and hopefully we can lower that insurance rating for the citizens.
Any questions or comments from the board? Nope. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is consider awarding a purchase order to Land Matters for sidewalk gap easement acquisition.
Hey, G four. Madam Supervisor, I approve the Township Supervisor Order Designee to sign purchase order offers, legal documents, and other associated agreements to facilitate sidewalk gap easement acquisition and sidewalk construction, and approve a purchase order to Land Matters in the amount of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars with the associated budget amendment in our packet.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Ansari. Engineering Services produced a sidewalk gap program report in July of 2022. Since that time, Engineering Services has been working on addressing and filling the approximately fifty-five miles of gaps identified in the report. These gaps were identified as the most crucial, as they are close to places of education and worship, as well as the most feasible to construct. Engineering has been using a mix of grant dollars, general funds, and the sidewalk repair program to fund this work. Currently, Engineering is requesting a new purchase order to be issued to obtain the sidewalk easements to accommodate the construction of sidewalks. The new purchase order will be issued to Land Matters in the amount of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is four hundred thousand plus a fifteen percent contingency. The contingency will also be used to address costs above the easement value, valuation. This could include additional land costs, landscaping items, and project administration costs. Land Matters has been serving the township as property acquisition experts over multiple projects. With this PO, Land Matters will be able to provide payment to property owners for said easements. So, okay. The amount requested is to accommodate the purchase and acquisition of multiple sidewalk easements for the installation of sidewalk and existing gaps. We've been using, as was said, a lot of grants, and we actually just found out we had another, SEMCOG has issued a nine-hundred thousand dollar grant for us for sidewalk gaps for additional projects. So this would be Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't really have anything to add, other than that now, this is the next step we have to take on, on some of these places that were not easy to put sidewalks, where township-owned or whatever. So there's several of these, and because it's procuring rights, we're very careful what, what information we made public, but they've been reviewed, and it'll be subject to legal approval once we sign off on the documents to get the rights.
And our number one, during phase one, what do we?
So this is the, our priority one is around schools and houses of worship.
Summer?
Quick question. It says in the RBA that we have, and you know, we've discussed before that we have fifty-five miles of gap.
Yes.
To fill. How much would this allow us to fill?
This is probably a couple of miles.
Okay. I mean, that's great, and glad to hear that we're getting more money to do even more work. Yep.
Amara?
Is there a particular area within Canton where this would be concentrated?
Around schools and houses of worship.
That's first.
That's our priority, yes.
That's your priority, okay.
Because we want kids to be able to walk to school, and, and congregates, get to their houses of worship, so walking.
Okay. Thanks.
So Land Matters, you're saying here, if you could just let everybody know, Land Matters has helped us with other purchases. What other projects have they worked on?
I'm sorry, Madam Supervisor.
What other projects has Land Matters helped us acquire right away?
So they were part of Ford Road, when we were working on all the, like Hagerty and Ford Road, so that was several parcels there that we were dealing with.
Any other projects for our sidewalks? Because I think-
I think they helped us with the water main.
Water mains?
Got some water main acquisition reasons we had to get to.
Okay. And this is for how long? This agreement with them?
Well, it's, it's, it's just, they're, they're going to accomplish tasks, it's not for a time duration. We have a list of property, a list of places that we're going to be doing.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G five. Consider approval of a purchase order to A three C Collaborative Architecture for the Architectural Designs Bid Documents Engineering and Owner's Responsibility for the Sheldon School Kids Talk Project.
Madam Supervisor, I approve the award to Architectural Design Engineering Bid Documents and Owner Represent, Representation, Representation, sorry, for the Sheldon School renovation in the amount not to exceed fourteen thousand, a hundred and fourteen thousand to AC three Collaborative Architecture and the Associated Budget Amendment listed in our packet.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. In April 2024, township staff met with Kids Talk at the Sheldon School Building. It is the township's and Kids Talk's desire to renovate this facility into a space to house the Kid Talk program. Sheldon School is approximately seventeen hundred square foot in size, which is undersized for the full needs of the Kids Talk program. Knowing the square footage constraints, A three C has included design and engineering for an addition to Sheldon School to create functionality for Kids Talk. This proposed addition will be connected to the school and will be located behind the school where previously a playground was located. Kids Talk, as a program of the Guidance Center, serves children through seventeen years and their non-offending family members, who have been the victims of child abuse, neglect, or witnessed violent crimes. The services provided by Kids Talk include forensic interviewing, child and family advocacy, emotional support, specialized medical evaluations, trauma-informed evidence-based therapy, and initiatives aimed at fostering systems change and enhancing collaboration and coordination. As the only children's advocacy center in Wayne County and the largest in Michigan, Kids Talk serves more than two thousand children annually across two locations, Midtown Detroit and Southgate. A recent community needs assessment conducted by the CAC revealed concerning findings, only twenty percent of the children served reside in Western Wayne County. This disparity is believed to be partially attributed to the geographical distance. Many families may find it, between Western Wayne cities and the Kids Talk locations. Although the CAC offers transportation services, many families may find it challenging to travel thirty to forty minutes one way to either location. Establishing a Kids Talk site in Western Wayne would greatly benefit children, families, and child welfare professionals. Introducing a third site with a forensic interviewing room would significantly enhance the capa- capacity, potentially enabling team members to conduct hundreds of additional interviews annually. This is crucial, given that the average wait time for forensic interviews in 2023 was eighteen days. So Canton Township is interested in moving forward with renovations to the vacant Sheldon School located on Michigan Avenue to allow Kids Talk to occupy the premises. These services will enhance the quality of life for many Canton residents and continue to offer services that are currently being offered in other areas of the county. Renovations to the building will be capped at one million dollars from the township and are a result of an allocation by the state of Michigan. So that was something that State Rep. Runji Puri got for us, or I'm sorry, Dana Bilhanki also. After receiving quotes from both firms with master service agreements with the township, it is a recommendation of the administration to utilize the township's master service agreement with A three C Collaborative Architecture to provide services for necessary architectural and engineering services to define, design, and implement the desired improvements, as summarized in the proposal, in amount to not exceed a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Any questions, comments? No? Great. This is a great, this is a great opportunity for us to help Canton residents and those nearby. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. G six. Consider Muslim Educational Community Center of America Special Land Use Application.
I'm sorry, Madam Supervisor, this is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, Resolution of the Board of Trustees Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, Approval of the Special Land Use for Mecca, where as a project sponsor has requested special land use for the approval of a religious institute on parcel number zero three one, nine-nine-zero-zero-zero-seven-zero-zero-zero at sixty-two hundred North Ridge Road, and where as a planning commission reviewed the special land use application and applicable criteria and voted six to one to recommend approval, with conditions as the request meets the criteria of the special land use approval in section twenty-seven point oh-three C of the zoning ordinance. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve the special land use in the planning application number zero three one dash, zero three one dash SLU dash eight-two-nine-five for a religious institute on the parcel number zero three one, nine-nine-zero-zero-zero-seven-zero-zero-zero at sixty-two hundred North Ridge Road, as requests meet the special land use criteria of section twenty-seven point zero-three C of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided and staff's analysis of the section twenty-seven point oh-three C, subject to the items noted in the staff's review being addressed and/or corrected at the time of the site plan review, and subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Support.
Thank you, Summer.
I think, I think I already did both at the same time, all of them. Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by both Trustee Ansari and Trustee Foster. So, let's see. The applicant proposes to amask on the eleven-point-four-seven acre parcel at sixty-two hundred North Ridge Road, located on the east side of North Ridge Road between Ford Road and Hanford Road. The site is zoned R1, single-family residential and religious institutions are special land uses in the R1 zoning district. The subject parcel includes a single-family residence on the west side, which is proposed for the demolition as part of the proposed development. At its meeting on June second, twenty twenty-five, the planning commission held a public hearing on the special land use application and recommended approval. Director Norwood, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add, but Community Planner Patrick Sloan is here to answer any questions we might have.
Patrick, do you have anything to add?
Only that there was a, a public hearing at the June second Planning Commission meeting. There were several people that spoke during the public hearing, and the Planning Commission also received several public comments before the meeting. The meeting was well-attended. Those who wanted to speak and have their voice heard had that opportunity, and the Planning Commission considered the comments and deliberated on the application and recommended approval of the special land use. So I'll be happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Okay, and we did have the pack, the board had the package review. Summer, do you have anything to add, as being on the Planning Commission?
Nothing to add in terms of Planning Commission, but a resident was here earlier who made a comment about this, this property, and I just wanted to clarify that it is for the religious institution, and it is not, we are not considering the school at this time. So I just wanted to clarify that, even though I think the resident who made the comment left.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? Kate?
Yeah, according to the background information we received, it looks like there are no plans to basically disturb the creek on the east side of the parcel, that that's going to be preserved, and the development is all on the western side. I just want to make sure I'm correct on that.
Yes, that's correct. The development is predominantly on the west side of the parcel, so Fellows Creek, and there, there's Fellows Creek in densely wooded areas, and Fellows Creek runs west to east on the parcels to the north, and then it turns southward through the middle of the parcel. So, and there's also a tributary to the south branch of Fellows Creek that runs from the northeastern corner westward to converge with Fellows Creek on this parcel. So a portion of Fellows Creek is eastward is left undisturbed, and the proposed development is west of Fellows Creek, west of the heavily wooded area.
Okay, well, I am glad that, that, you know, there's no plans to disturb the creek. I also noticed that there were concerns, and I think that this would be more for the next steps, but that there had been some concerns expressed about the height of the building, and I'm hoping that the consideration can be taken to not make it quite as high as is being planned currently.
And we've recommended that the applicants consider keeping that height within the ordinance limits, which would require it to be reduced by ten feet. The architectural element would have to be reduced by ten feet. So we've asked the applicant to consider that. If the special land use is approved, then the applicant can determine whether to make that adjustment or to apply for a variance. If the variance is not approved, they can still have the option to lower that height as well. So it'll be up to the applicant whether they choose to apply for a variance.
Okay. Thanks for that info. And then also, I just, I did notice that one of the planning commissioners had asked about a loudspeaker for like the call to prayer, and just want to make sure that residents understand that, you know, according to what the information we received, that there's no plans for that.
That's correct. At the public hearing, the applicant's team stated that they were not planning to have any kind of loudspeakers for an audible announcement. They had mentioned that the first and last prayers, they go pretty early and pretty late, so.
Well, I would like to thank them for the, their consideration for their neighbors.
Comments or questions? Oh, call for a vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. G seven. Consider adoption of Canton's Vision for Tomorrow, a Comprehensive Community Master Plan, Compliance with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act PA thirty-three of two thousand and eight MSD. Be read by Trustee Foster.
Resolution twenty twenty-five twenty, Resolution of the Board of Trustees Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, Adoption of the Master Plan Canton's Vision for Tomorrow, a Comprehensive Community Master Plan and Dependencies. Whereas the Canton Town, whereas the Charter Township of Canton Planning Commission pursuant to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, Public Act thirty-three of two thousand and eight as amended, has prepared a master plan for the future use, development, and preservation of lands within the township. And whereas the Planning Services Division, with assistance from McKenna, facilitated several public engagement events and activities to garner feedback from community members on their wants and needs in their home community. And whereas the master plan consists of research and analysis dealing with land use, demographics, corridor development, transportation, commercial corridors, infill development, neighborhood nodes, environmental preservation, and sustainable design, community facilities, recreation, and other pertinent topics. And whereas the master plan analysis was used to prepare a future land use map that allocates land in appropriate amounts for the future development of residential uses, commercial and office uses, mixed uses, industrial uses, and public and institutional uses. And whereas the Planning Commission initiated an update of the current comprehensive plan based on its review and consideration of alternative land uses and goals and objectives for future development. And whereas the Township Board of Trustees distributed the draft master plan for a period of sixty-three days, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five through March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, for review and comment to surrounding municipalities and other agencies required by the Michigan Planning Enabling- municipalities and other agencies required by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. And whereas the Planning Commission held the required public hearing on May 5th, 2025, and considered all comments and concerns of the public, and unanimously approved and recommended adoption of the master plan to the Township Board of Trustees. And whereas in April 2025, Canton Township was awarded a grant from the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments to conduct a road safety audit by Fishbeck at the intersection of Ford Road and Beck Road and Ford Road and Ridge Road. And the RSA has included participation from SEMCOG, the Michigan Department of Transportation, Wayne County, and Canton Township officials, including the Department of Public Safety. And whereas to date, RSA has revealed many safety concerns and corresponding recommendations which are continuing to be evaluated for implementation by the RSA partners. Resolved, the Board of Town, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby adopt the master plan document Canton's Vision for Tomorrow: A Comprehensive Community Master Plan, including all maps, documents, and appendices in compliance with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act PA 33 of 2008 as amended, provided that the neighborhood node number 12 shall not be implemented until after the recommendations of SEMCOG's RSA are implemented.
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Foster, supported by Trustee Breninsky. Okay, great. Was South Stephen there? All these great women. All right, great. So, I just, so pursuant to the Michigan Plan Enabling Act, the Planning Commission with assistance from Canton's Planning Service Staff, which are, you know, back here, we have Erin and Patrick, they have prepared Canton's Vision for Tomorrow: A Comprehensive Community Master Plan, which is presented to the Board of Trustees for adoption. It was developed after receiving input from Canton residents, business owners, property owners, senior residents, students, other key community stakeholders, I think, for 30 months, I think you had said. And it, we were at several events, getting public input, we've held several forums on this. The master plan addresses land use, demographics, commercial corridors, transportation, housing, infill development, neighborhood nodes, environmental preservation, urban design, and many other important topics. So, this is a big deal. So, the last time we did this was in 2017, and so doing this was a big thing for our community, and we've had a lot of input. How much input have we had, Erin?
A lot.
A lot?
A lot of input.
How many public comments do we have recorded?
Over 1,300 with all the events and everything that we've done. We had over, close to 1,400 responses to the community survey. We held 15 stakeholder discussions throughout the course of a couple of months. We had master plan advisory boards, public meetings here with the Planning Commission. We've, it's been a heavy lift. It's been, it's been a fun project, but we're excited to get it over across the threshold tonight.
Very good. And Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. The really only thing I'd like to thank is, I'd like to say is a thank you to all the folks who worked on this, certainly the Canton community who provided input, but also led by Patrick Sloan and his planning team, especially, specifically Erin Schulto, who carried the ball, kept us all in line, kept this thing moving. So, I just really appreciate her hard work on this, and I'm glad we're going to bring this to you today.
Thank you. Patrick, do you want to say anything?
Nothing else to add beyond what's already been said. It's great to see the project come to a conclusion, and the implementation of a lot of the items that are in the master plan are already underway and will be coming before the board with more of that in the coming months. So, we're excited to continue on with our planning work and implement the master plan.
Okay, Summer, I know you and Kate were on the board, if you want to just give something, a little.
Yeah, thank you to Patrick and Erin. Erin, you did an incredible job leading us through this process with lots of input from Planning Commissioners and lots of input from the Master Plan Advisory Board and as well as residents. I, I was here during the 2017 process, and it was not as broad and inclusive, and so I'm proud to have been a part of this. And thank you to both Patrick and Erin for your leadership here.
Kate, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I will say that, first of all, being on the Master Plan Advisory Board was really, really interesting, and I was grateful to have the opportunity to learn. And thank you to Erin for being our great leader. You are, you really led us with diplomacy and fairness, and I appreciated that so much. And thank you, Patrick. You came to all of our meetings also, and were a great resource for us. And thank you to all the people that served with us on the board and to the Planning Commission, and also to all the residents who gave us their input because we really, really value the input, and they, and have had some really great ideas coming from residents.
Thank you. Amara, anything?
As the newbie on the board, I was really excited when the draft came out, just to, you know, think about building a Canton community that is for all kinds of residents, whether young, whether they're just starting families, whether they're seniors. And I was really proud to see that there's a pathway for all kinds of people from diverse backgrounds and different walks of life to feel at home in Canton. The sustainability piece was also a pretty big one, and I appreciate the thought that went into that. I know Erin and I kind of talked about that right at the beginning. So, you know, was also impressed to hear about the number of comments that came from the community. And yeah, I mean, this and kids talk, you know, knowing that we have resources for people of all ages in Canton that we can call home is really cool. So, I'm excited about this. I'm really excited.
Diane?
Well, yeah, ditto, but everyone, at what everybody has said, I appreciate all the hard work everyone has put in, even the community. It's great, and, and I was here in 2017 too, and so this was a much more thoughtful process, I feel. And one thing about the nodes I do appreciate, yeah, I know people are concerned especially about node number 12, that, you know, there are things that are going to have to happen before anything can be done there. And, and we don't want a bunch of strip malls. These are nice, small pockets, and so I'm looking very forward to moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. And as Diane just mentioned, you know, node 12, which is Ford and Beck, you know, that's one thing that we just added because we were doing a road safety audit on Ford and Beck and Ford and Ridge. So, basically, we're stating that per the Enabling Act as amended, providing that neighborhood node 12 shall not be implemented until after the recommendation of SEMCOG's roads study audit are implemented. And there's a lot of requirements there, such as adding left turn lanes and expanding the drain, so it's, it's a big push to get there, but we want to make sure that the intersection is ready for anything, like for that particular node. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. So, Erin, what would be the next steps? Because we know it doesn't just stop here.
No, now the fun starts. So, the completed master plan will be available on the township website. It'll have final adopted, the resolution will be included in that as well. And so now we start the implementation. The master plan includes goals, objectives, and implementation strategy, and these are the things that we're going to start working on. Some are short, short-range goals and objectives, things that we can start doing, somewhat, some of which we've already started doing, and they could be completed within six months to a year. Others are going to take a little bit longer, and the, the steps forward will feel much slower, but, you know, we're, we're still working towards, towards things. We're working on a transit plan right now, public transit plan. That's just getting started. We're looking at our urban forestry master plan, we're looking at a sustainability plan, a housing assessment, zoning ordinance updates. I mean, we're, we're really hitting the ground running on getting all of these, getting all these implemented from all the, the feedback that we heard from the community. So, we're, we're running fast.
Good, thanks.
Erin just made me think of something. The master plan does have a section on transportation in transit, and the Michigan Legislature passed a bill this last December that communities are no longer able to opt out of SMART, and so the Planning Department does have a survey that they are encouraging people to fill out. So, we know what residents think about transit and what they would like to see in this community since that law has passed.
And to that end, we will also be doing stakeholder discussions and more public engagement. So, if you're listening, if you're in the room, stay tuned. Please look at the website, contact me anytime. We'd love to hear your, your feedback.
We've already had a lot coming from this, definitely. All right, next on the agenda, congratulations to everybody, though, this is a big, a big push.
Can we clap?
What's that?
Can we clap?
Yes, we can clap.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Next, we have additional public comments. So, additional public comments, let me look online first to see if anyone is online for additional public comments. Why is it? If you're online and you want to raise your hand electronically for public comment, please let me know. I don't see anyone online raising their hand. Okay, anybody in the room, additional public comment, please come to the podium, three minutes, and Emma's going to help us with the timing.
It won't take three minutes, so I'm going to start.
Okay.
Good evening.
Say your name, sorry.
My name is Islam Hamud. I live at 46609 Inverness Road, Canton. As Chairman of the Board of Directors of Mecca, I'm here to thank you all, to thank you, the Aunt Mary and your team, of course, and I would like to thank the Planning Commissioners who voted in favor of providing the permit for us last few days ago, six to zero. I also would like to thank Patrick and his team for your patience and guidance for the last one and a half year. Have a lot of back and forth to ensure that we do things right. And on behalf of Mecca community, I would like to thank you, and we look forward to continue working with you and completing this community center that we hope will add value to the diversity of this great township. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Couple of things. I notice when I walk into the summit every morning, I go by the machine that distributes Narcan. I don't understand why that's there. It's free. I don't know if we've got that many druggies in Canton, what the deal is. You get fentanyl things there. I know when you go to the pharmacy, it's 50 bucks. Since I'm a conservative, I don't believe in any of that stuff. I know that you guys are empathetic with all these fringe things, but like I said, I'm more of a traditionalist, you know, family. And I want to use one word for you guys. I don't think you've ever heard it before, or maybe not in the context, but the word is fiduciary. You guys have got a responsibility to all the residents of Canton, not just the liberals. I know my views aren't all that popular, but so be it. I mean, I waited for my three minutes here. Oh, I got two. Wow. Anyways, no, when my wife and I finally decide to leave Canton, it's, it's not going to be with sadness. Every month, I get people that want to buy my property, and I'll be glad to see it gone. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller, let's get back to the atomic waste. Evidently, there's going to be hundreds of truckloads of that stuff come. I worked on Fermi 1 and Fermi 2, both sewer plants down in Detroit, Delray, and down in Wyandotte, and Wyandotte Chemical, and Zug Island, nice place. I'd like to know, all that stuff is supposed to go to Yucca Mountain, and for a fact, I seen locomotives when they took Fermi 1 and dismantled it. Jackhammers, cranes that weighed 50 tons went out to Yucca Mountain in Nevada. Your Corps of Engineers is a problem. I'd like to know how well they're going to do on flooding, for one thing here. And that's, I've been following these dumps for years. The first dump Waste Management had on Hanon Road going south, PCBs in there, public record, Edison Blue Transformer, and down in Monroe, instead of going over to Willa Run, your friendly DEQ said it's good enough to put it there. 20 miles down the road, let's go to Mr. Castillo, he put in a request years ago. Like I said, people coming through the gate, whatever chemical it was, they swear that's what it is, they're on camera and recorded, so they go to look for it and so-and-so sell, and it doesn't show up there. Just like I said, did it ever make it to the dump? Is it in cell 27? Or what cell is it in where it's supposed to be? And we're supposed to believe these people? Yeah, I hope that you appeal things constantly, because you're going to need a truckload of money against whom disposal.
Anyone else in the room? Okay, public comment closed. We'll do some administrative comments. Erin, do you have anything? Patrick? Emma? Michelle? You add?
I'd just like to mention tonight, as we speak right now, we have three officers receiving the Medal of Valor Award up in Boeing, and that's in my 30 years, and that's the first time I've ever seen one given to an officer from Canton, and we're receiving three tonight for their valor in the field as it relates to saving lives in some strenuous situations. So, just want to congratulate them. And also, Chris and I, the fire chief, we have ages approximately 12 to 16, starting the Youth Public Safety Academy this week, and that's a good time to reach those folks as we try to fill our rings. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chief Stockline, Chris?
I just wanted to comment, one, one on the Narcan machine that's at the summit, that we didn't pay for that, and we don't, we don't pay to fund that. That was through the opioid settlement, and that's through Wayne County that funds that.
Correct.
And we do have overdoses in Canton Township that we run on all the time, so I think it's a good thing to have out in the community for us. And then secondly, we, the police and fire also received a grant. We're still working through some of that, and together, it's still going to be a little over a million dollars, almost 1.2 million dollar grant for what they call preemption, and that will be installed in all of our fire trucks and all of our ambulances, and then all, again, all the police cars, so that when we're responding to calls, that intersection will change green lights for us as we come up to intersection, and it's a GPS system, which will actually change the lights two or three in front of that and keep the intersections clear for us. So, not only will, will enhance our response times for both police and fire, but it's also going to keep the community safe and keep the firefighters and police officers safe. So, we're, we're working on through a little bit of the 20% match with the county, and we'll see where we end up with that, but hopefully we can get the entire thing covered. But we've got at least 80% of it covered once, once the fiduciary comes through with the final paperwork on it.
That's very good. So, basically, when you come out of the station, you would be able to change your lights to green or red to stop people, and use your sirens, which would help traffic, and you can get your place safer.
That's correct, and we have, we budgeted for 81 signals throughout the township, so it'll cover 81, 81 of the signals.
Very good.
So, we're working with DPW MSD to figure out how many signals we had, and that's, that's the majority of the signals in the township.
Thank you. Dave? The supervisor, Joe?
Just like to add to what Chief Stockline said about the grant. He didn't say he worked for about two years in order to secure this grant, and the total amount of funding is actually, I think, in excess of $5 million, and, and his public safety team, you know, worked along with him. You know, we are looking to work with some of our partners in order to get the 20% match required to, you know, accept the grant and implement the program. But, you know, so long as we're able to do that, this will be a big deal for the township, and it'll really be a big deal for all of Western Wayne County. It's really a great, a great pilot program. We also heard from Brandon Grisco tonight, and I just wanted to comment from Faison Grisco, which is a law firm representing Canton and the other communities involved in the lawsuit against. against Wayne Disposal to stop them from importing radioactive waste from Lewiston, New York. Brandon, Jim Fason, the entire team, along with Wayne County, as Brandon said, who intervened in the lawsuit after we won our first motion, have done a really fantastic job throughout this process. Every step of the way, when Wayne Disposal has filed a motion, you know, as he said, they attempted to have the case removed to federal court to try and make the issue of Manhattan Project Waste a federal question. Brandon and his team filed a motion to get, get the case back into state court. You know, Wayne Disposal filed a motion to dismiss. Brandon and the team with Wayne County filed a motion to oppose that and won. So they've, they've really been fantastic in their advocacy for Canton and all the communities. You know, when you're, have any job to do, you know, whether it's around the house or somewhere else, you got to find the right tool first, you know, do the job. And Fason Grisco has been really fantastic in its service to the township. We really have the right tool to continue resisting Wayne Disposal's efforts to import radioactive waste to the community, so I just wanted to say that on their behalf.
Yeah, and thanks for helping with that, and also with working, with working with Fason and the team, and also with the resolution for Salem Township, too. So, and next steps there are to sit down and create that intergovernmental agreement between the communities, so that we can make sure that the wastewater treatment plant doesn't happen. Amara, do you want to have anything?
No.
Kate?
So, over the weekend, it became summer, and, so happy summer, everyone, but, but also with these hot days, please make sure that you are keeping hydrated and staying cool. We do have cooling centers at the summit and at the public library, so please be careful and don't forget your four-legged friends also.
Diane?
All right, July is ending. I'm, I'm sorry, June, I'm too quick. June is ending, and July's going to be here very soon. We are mailing out property taxes, so they should be in your mailbox the first week of July, so just want to remind folks about that. And this was a great meeting.
Thank you, Summer.
My comment is, I think we were able to do some really good things for our community tonight that I'm incredibly proud of. I do, going back to Narcan, just want to mention that is an issue that goes beyond partisanship, that it impacts a number of families in this community. I remember Canton Township under my first term was a leader in our opioid recovery program that was led by our public safety department, and that was something that we were really proud of, leading and bringing to other communities. And so it's an issue for me that goes beyond partisanship, and I'm glad that we can continue to serve our residents in this way.
Thank you. All right, great. So a couple of things. So Thursday is our, our concert series starts, Thursday night, and it's our Pride Outside on Thursday. That's a big event just before the concert series. I also want to mention that we did have a, one of our employees pass, Craig Comey, passing, so if anyone has any questions about that or knows him, just let us know, we can give you some information on that. So we're really sad that Craig has passed. How long, Michelle, did he work at the township?
He's worked for the township since September 2006.
A very nice person, so we're sorry to, to have that happened. Another thing, as I just want to say, this is kind of leading with, unfortunately, the gentleman left, but I don't consider any of our residents fringe, and we will always make sure that we have a safety net for our residents. And so unfortunately, we do have overdoses in Canton, as in any other community, and our public safety comes across that all the time. And as was said by Chief Stockline, that that machine was put in place by Wayne County in Narcan, and it's not just for people who are considering overdose, although it is for them, but it's also for family members. So if you, anyone's ever had a family member, which unfortunately, many people do know people who've overdosed are family members who have addictive behaviors to drugs, that machine is for them also. If you, so if you think that you have somebody that you're worried about in your home, you can come get a free Narcan package, and there's also fentanyl strips in there, right? Is that correct, what's in that machine? Narcan, okay. And our police and fire carry it, and it does have an expiration, so if you do have some at home, check the expiration date. I think you can go a little past that, but you want to make sure you get it, but at least you can go, come here. But again, it was supplied by Wayne County, and it's in communities all the way across Wayne County, because Wayne County was concerned about the health of our residents, and unfortunately, the overdose is happening. But we don't have fringe residents. We have residents that we care about, and that's important. I hope that gentleman hears that. Anything else from the board? No? Okay, well, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slaven, supported by trustee Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Oh, happy 4th of July, everybody. Forgot about that.